Well, good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order for July 12th. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Leon.
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Okay, Counselor Hoy, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Any discussion seconded by Anderson? Did you?
I'll second it.
Ah, you just.
We have item 6D. It's a planning administrative decision. We have a revised planning administrative decision with an updated report, and the revisions were made to the conditions of approval.
Very good. Any discussion? The recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leon.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye.
Okay, very good. We will then go to council comments. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give council and the public just sort of a really quick and brief update on some of the work that the legislature has done regarding homelessness, specifically locally, but then also a little bit of a statewide perspective. And as your representative on the Mid Valima Valley Homeless Alliance, we're doing a lot of work with the county, both counties, Polk and Marion, and neighboring cities, Kaiser, Independence, Monmouth, the school district, the tribe, all sorts of different governmental bodies and nonprofits to make sure that we're moving forward in a systematic and thoughtful way. And I just thought it would be good to hear about some of the really amazing amounts of money that are going to be coming to the state and locally. It's really quite staggering when you look at it. I've never seen anything like it. Having, you know, I was an intern in the 87th session of the Oregon Legislature, and so I've sort of been watching it every session since then, and I've never seen anything like this. So just very briefly, and just know that the math here is my math, so don't quote me on it. I was a political science major, not a math major. So there's going to be about $120 million throughout the state coming to address homelessness specifically, including $47 million to increase shelter capacity, $25 million for technical assistance with shelters, $20 million for behavioral health housing incentive fund, $12 million for permanent supportive housing, 3.6 million specifically to address youth homelessness. And then in tenant support, there's, it looks like there's about $20 million, including $5 million specifically for domestic violence and sexual assault survivors, which is really critical, really critical funding. Also regarding homeownership, there's going to be about $70 million to assist folks with becoming homeowners. And in terms of the housing supply, which is of course very critical here in Salem and elsewhere, there's going to be about $550 million to help increase the housing supply, and also an additional $150 million to address specifically wildfire victims of the last year's wildfires. Now, that is all in addition or including the amount specific here to Salem and locally, what our legislative committee and our lobbyists and a lot of folks were able to bring directly to the city, which includes, among other things, $800,000 for the assistance in purchase of a project, turnkey project, $1 million for our housing assistance voucher program, and $10.5 million for helping us with sheltering, including purchasing an operation, operation specifically of a navigation center, which is really going to be a game changer in Salem. It's going to be that missing piece in our continuum of resources and truly is going to be a game changer, and I couldn't be more excited. In addition, things in our area that weren't directly city-involved, but the Salem YMCA Veterans Housing Project is going to be beginning $6.1 million for veterans' affordable housing. And the Center for Hope and Safety is going to be getting $7.6 million for their project, which is going to help domestic violence and sexual assault survivors, work that's very near and dear to my heart as a person who's worked with domestic violence survivors for a number of years. And so I just wanted to sort of update the council. Also, I just wanted to mention to you, one of the things that's probably, you know, the number one attention-getter in my ward, and certainly for the entire council probably, is the area under Market and I-5. You know, that's a really troubling situation. I know there have been at least six deaths that I know of associated with that site since September, which is really quite alarming. It's an unsafe situation for everybody involved. And, you know, we've been working, it's not in the city's jurisdiction, it's an ODOT property. And through a lot of really collaborative work with the governor's office and with ODOT, staff has worked with them, and that actual, the progress is being made and work is happening right now to relocate those folks. So that notice was posted last week, and I believe over the next couple of weeks, folks will be relocated out of that really dangerous situation. So I know that a lot of my neighbors are going to be quite happy to see that, and I know that you probably all will as well. So I just wanted to give that update.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy, and I really want to do a shout out to you and to the tremendous work you're doing in the Homeless Alliance. I think that's been one of the really great successes that we've had going over the past several years, and your role in that, since you were appointed to it, I think, has just really been a game changer for this region in terms of the activities around homelessness. So thank you very much. You brought a lot of great experience. Yeah, it really, really good stuff. Thank you for bringing that, pulling all that together, Counselor. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I speak again about an unfortunate situation with another pedestrian death in downtown Salem. It happened Friday, the 4th of July weekend, and it was a 73-year-old woman named Marlene Moreno. She was at Center and High Street, crossing on, across Center Street, and a car going, a driver making a left-hand turn with the light ran her over, you know, a turn you could make, a permitted turn, maybe it was a right-hand turn, ran her, ran her, ran her over in the street, and she's gone now. And she was where she was supposed to be, walking with the light. She's the sixth person who has died, a pedestrian who has died in Salem, so we're averaging one a month, and I guess we're doing about what we did last year, because we had 11 people die in 12 months last year. You know, it really, I've talked about it being a systemic sort of thing, not just an accident, but it also is on the drivers of vehicles. They do not need to be in such a hurry to get where they're going. I mean, this person was making a turn when somebody was walking had the right of way there. And so please, people who are driving cars, look at your surroundings, be considerate of people who have every right to be on the street just like you do. And, you know, I hope I don't come back next month, but, you know, it happens all too often. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my thoughts go to the family of that woman and also the driver. I know that's probably a very traumatic thing to have happen to you as well, and so I know everybody is hurting in that situation. So, but thanks for bringing it up, Counselor Anderson. I wanted to thank Public Works. Actually, I've been meaning to do this for a couple of meetings, but I keep forgetting. Public Works and I have been working with several different things, one of which you guys heard about, which is the intersection of Seventeenth and Madison. We had some folks come down and talk about that, and I wanted to thank Public Works for going out and trimming some trees and putting up some signs, and I hope that that has made a difference for folks in that area. I appreciate the quick action there, and I know a lot of times things come up here, but there's no closure or follow-up on what happened. So I wanted to bring that up and highlight just how fast that action was taken and really thank our staff for doing such a great job. Another thing that we've been working with a constituent over, I think it's on Jefferson Streets or Thompson, right over there, and they were complaining about just some drive-through traffic from Madison. And if folks don't know our area very well, a lot of people cut through the little neighborhoods here because there's some long lights. And so we worked it out with Public Works. We got them to change the lights up there on Capitol, and I believe even on Summer and Madison, and that really has made a difference. I drive, I live on Capitol, so I drive Capitol a lot, and I'm stopped there so many times now, so much more frequently. And I am not somebody who's in a hurry, so I really appreciate that because it really values the folks who live there as well as the folks who are needing to safely get through the area. So thank you, Public Works, for working with us. Thank you for really investing in this section of town and making a difference for folks who live there. And I also wanted to just remind folks that a really great, exciting time is coming up in our city, and that is the State Fair. I know Counselor Hoy and I were talking about this on the phone the other day, so just reminding people that's coming up. Tickets are going on sale now. We hope that you guys come. It's a great, a great event for our city. I know Counselor Gonzalez and I share that in our ward, and it's just such a great time for families to come together. And I would love everybody to try and enter something in the fair this year as well. I have my stuff set up to enter, so we don't have a really great, robust State Fair without entries. So consider showing off what you've made in the pandemic and all your time at home, and help come together as a community and come support this event. So thanks so much.
Very good. We got Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. So just kind of a monthly update regarding COVID-19. I'm thrilled to say that on July 2nd, Oregon reached the 70% milestone of partially vaccinated amongst vaccine-eligible residents. Overall, a clear majority of Oregonians have chosen the protection offered by vaccination. As of today, nearly 55% of all Oregonians have been fully vaccinated against COVID-19, regardless of age or vaccine eligibility. In absolute numbers, that's 2.5 million. Over 2.5 million Oregonians have received at least one vaccine, and over 2.3 million Oregonians are fully vaccinated for COVID-19. COVID-19 vaccines are safe, effective, and free. Getting vaccinated offers outstanding protection against illness and death. Data shows that more than 99% of deaths from COVID-19 are now among people who have not yet been vaccinated. The scientific message is crystal clear. Getting a COVID-19 vaccine can literally save your life and the lives of your loved ones. Now is the best time to get protected with these safe, effective, and free vaccines. No one wants to return to a time of shutdowns. Vaccination is the best way to keep our community members safe and local businesses open. Now, later this evening, one more thing, thank you, Mayor, is that there's agenda item 5A coming up, and, you know, community members, we've received 40 testimonials in favor of that resolution item that's coming up. And if we start getting, you know, a lot more than six or seven people testifying in favor, please be sure to just, you know, curb your enthusiasm a little bit. I feel like there's a supportive feeling in the atmosphere tonight. I know there's a lot of excitement to get that done. I know that I personally and professionally am very excited to see that move forward. But, you know, if we get over 10, there's really no need for that.
Okay. So knock off the emails? Is that what you're saying?
Just tonight, I don't know how many people have signed up. I want to make sure.
Surprisingly, Counselor, not very many. Counselor Gonzalez.
Muchas gracias, Mayor. My name is Jose Gonzalez, and as many of you know, I always introduce myself in multiple languages to highlight the long-term, long-time diversity of our community. Today was Spanish again. I've used it. But it's, I'm doing it because in honor of the people of Cuba, you know, I don't know all the details of what's happening there, but I know that most likely we're not part of that solution. And to piggyback Counselor Phillips' comments on the vaccine, I partnered with Salem Health to do a Spanish video on why I got vaccinated. It's on their Facebook page if you guys want to check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to take a minute to share, I think, some, an honor the city received that's been a long time in the making, and that's a national recognition from the American Public Works Association for the Pringle Creek Restoration Project. You all have been involved in this. Believe me, councils over the years have been involved in this. It was designed, the project itself, to remove the concrete pylons that supported the historic site of the old Boise Cascade paper mill, which was on Commercial and Trade Street. The building was constructed over the Pringle Channel, and while the building has been removed, the concrete slab is supporting concrete pylons, and a water tower remained in place, blocking and partially covering the creek. The goal of the project was to remove the concrete covering the creek west of Commercial Street Bridge, enhance the natural stream flow in Pringle Creek, improve fish passage by replacing a fish ladder with in-stream pools and riffles, increasing aquatic habitat, and increasing the diversity of wildlife by developing and installing native plants along the stream. This project was funded by a $1.3 million contribution from the South Waterfront Urban Renewal Area and $1.6 million from the Stormwater Utility. It was submitted for nomination by the Oregon Chapter of American Public Works Association, and it earned the 2021 Public Works Project of the Year in the environmental category for projects under $5 million. As I said, this is a multiple-year project. This is one that Counselor Anderson mentions often, his hanging bridge, which will help complete the creek. This, for those of you who've been here a while, you may remember salmon coming up Pringle Creeks. Perhaps someday we'll all see them coming back up Pringle Creek. So this is just really good news. Congratulations, Mr. Fernandez, to you, your staff, and the work you all have done on this project. It's one that's just a really tremendous asset to this community that, as I said, I've had, I've worked with mayors over the years, working on this project and councils, and seeing this honored and moving so close, except for the councilor's hanging bridge, we will maybe get to at some point, I hope. This is really tremendous work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Leon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for all your updates. I just had a few comments I wanted to make today. As a reminder to folks, I had talked at one of the last, I think, probably two council meetings where I talked about the opportunity to include a land acknowledgement. We still have not done that, and I don't know if this, if there's a space that we could incorporate that within our agenda. So I'm just going to go ahead and actually read it as part of my council comments again. And I also have a few other comments I wanted to make, echoing some of the things that folks have talked about, specifically the homeless community as well as some other issues and questions I had. So today in all days, we honored acknowledged indigenous peoples and rightful owners of this occupied land, the Clathmith Tribe of the Southern Oregon Plateau, the Burns Puyuit of the high desert east, the Colquay of the southern Oregon's coastal forests, the Confederate Tribes of Grand Round and Northern Coast Region, the Cow Creek Band of Umpqua in the southern Oregon foothills, the Confederate Tribes of Umptilla in the Blue Mountains, the Confederate Tribes of Soletts in Oregon's northern rainforest, the Confederate Tribes of Cusse, Lower Umpqua, and Sisla on the wind-blown southern coast, the Confederate Tribes of Warm Springs on the sunny eastern slopes of the Oregon Cascades, and all indigenous communities hold ancestral ties to this land. So my first comment specifically about the homeless community that were living at Market Street, I do agree that the homeless who were living underneath the overpass and on the side roads was a dangerous situation. However, I'm also concerned about what it means for people who are being relocated. The highway overpass was a safe place for some of these people, safety from the weather elements like the rain, the heavy wind. And as you all remember, not less than two weeks ago, when the weather was almost 100, registered as 117 degrees, the result of that. My understanding is that over 100 people died, of which 30 people were from Marion County. I understand Gretchen Bennett is looking into that more and will hopefully have an update on the total number of people who died who were homeless and others who died in their homes. I also hope that those individuals who are being relocated are being treated humanely, and they truly have a safe space to call home and not being relocated to another area behind bushes or in open spaces where they're not feeling safe at all. Another question, or actually more of a comment slash question, the oak trees. I'm going to keep hounding council about this. Last year, most of you had voted to have Costco relocate from Mission Street to Kubler. Those oak trees that were relocated are not doing well. I drive by that area often, and I see the trees. There's brown leaves on at least two of the trees or no leaves at all. And I wanted to ask city staff if it's possible for them to check on the health status of the oak trees, as it was a promise from PAC Trust to maintain the health and wellness of those trees. And let's say those oak trees do die. What recourse do we have, if any, as a city to hold PAC Trust accountable for the potential loss of those trees?
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Stapleton.
I apologize for coming back. I had remembered something that I had forgotten, and I wanted to acknowledge the Edgewater Partnership Neighborhood Association, who got an award from the U.S. Census Bureau for their effort in getting out the effort to get people to respond over in the Edgewater District, which is an area that really needs to have representation. And so I wanted to give them kudos here for all the hard work that they did to get out that, that response work in the area of Edgewater. And so a job well done. Thank you for your work.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Counselor, or Counselor, Mr. Powers.
Well, thank, thank you, Mayor. You know, first, Counselor Leon and counselors, we'll certainly follow up on your question regarding the Costco trees. To build upon the comments from Counselor Hoy, while that tremendous help is arriving from the state regionally as council has really invested in downstream, longer improvements to the homeless, the unhoused and sheltering crisis, our work continues on trying to help people get to more appropriate shelter. Our outreach continues. Our work continues at the two parks, and when I say our work, that includes human service agencies, includes individuals who have worked very hard and continue to work very hard, including from our Housing Authority to establish relationships with, with people, to build trust, to help connect them to services, and we're very, very aware of how tenuous and how fragile those relationships can be. We are working with the Oregon Department of Transportation regarding the camps at I-5 and Market and Hyones Inn and Salem Parkway. Both areas are unsafe and are not suitable long-term for shelter. Our outreach has already begun, as was mentioned by Counselor Hoy. The areas were posted by the state of Oregon on the 8th, and our work actually had begun well before that, and will continue as far as trying to assist people find more suitable shelter. The choice will be theirs. We'll be providing assistance. We are very frustrated about, while there is help and more help coming, we are very frustrated by the need outpacing the supply. And, and I won't, I won't try to, you know, say that any other way. We do have challenges, and we are, we are working to address those challenges, particularly shelter for women. With the additional capacity very soon from the UGM, there will be a choice for men. It's much more challenging for women. So we are continuing those efforts, and we are working very closely, as we have in past years, with ODOT to ensure, to the extent possible, that the cleanup efforts are done humanely and done with service connection as one of the priorities. City offices will be reopening. The library opened July 6th in our rented space, and we're looking very much forward to returning to the main library. Center 50+ has reopened partially. They're doing a phased reopening with a grand reopening on September 7th, in tandem with the National Senior Centers Welcome Back and Moving Forward Event. So we're looking forward to celebrating the grand reopening of Center 50+, and council will be updated as those details come together. And we are working on having the council chambers be ready for council's return. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I'd just add to one of the openings that will be occurring. I know Saturday morning, I'll be attending. I hope council has received information on this, but there will be an opening at the New Union Gospel Mission site. They're going to be opening the doors and really getting underway. So we'll see how all that goes. Very excited about it. It's an, it's an opportunity really to come in and take a look at the, at the new facility. It's quite an impressive facility. Okay. All right, we'll move on then to the public comment. Several folks signed up. Pamela Lyons Nelson. There she is. Hi, Pamela.
Hi, Chuck. This is my first time doing it this way, and I can hardly believe that I'm successful.
You're doing a great job so far.
Yes. And, and thank you, Mayor and city council, for allowing me to speak on this issue. We, we have a resolution that's coming up, and Counselor Phillips has, has brought this, is bringing this forward. And I would just like to say that this is an issue that is very dear to me and to the people that I have worked with throughout my career. I have a lot of experience with people losing nearly everything by healthcare not being considered in this state, in this country, as a fundamental human right. That would mean so many other things. We can look internationally to see what this means. Every other wealthy, industrialized, westernized nation takes it as given that healthcare is a human right. What we see as a result of that basic assumption is that we do not see medical bankruptcies, which are considered a horror show by every other rich, industrialized, westernized country. A horror show. They think it's monstrous. If it were a hu, a human right, then people would be, would have access, the access they need to get the human care they need for their human bodies, to continue to work and pay taxes and take care of their children, and do all those things that, that go unencumbered in other nations. So internationally, we're an outlier. We're an absolute outlier on this issue. We consider ourselves an ethical community here in Salem. We sometimes wonder if the ethics are all the same for everyone, and we know that people have different value systems. But fundamentally, it doesn't make any difference whether you're progressive or apolitical or conservative. If you have grandchildren that are going to be made homeless and their parents bankrupt because healthcare was not seen as a human right, then you're liable to consider that maybe we should consider that as being a human right.
Thank you, Pamela, very much. Thank you, Pamela, very much. Does anyone have any questions for Pamela?
Was that three minutes?
That was three minutes. It just goes so fast.
Okay, okay.
But you got your message across really quite well.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I didn't hear that. Okay.
But I do want to mention that you're in Ward 1, aren't you, Pamela?
Yes, Virginia.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Trout, as you can tell, we have a three-minute limit, and we'd like to know where you're from.
My name's Jason Trout. I'm actually from Clackamas, Oregon. I represent TNT Fireworks and the 11 nonprofit organizations that sell fireworks within the city of Salem. And I'm responding tonight to the city council asking you to help allow us to be part of the solution for your city. TNT sells in 49 states in the United States, we're the largest retailer of fireworks. We've been involved with many municipalities that have run into the same issues that Salem is talking about, trying to, you know, set up some criteria to allow a fire chief or a fire marshal to ban fireworks in times of extreme drought. You know, one of the issues that I had in the state of Oregon and Washington this year was this municipality banned fireworks after we were already open. We had tents up, we committed our leases, our nonprofit groups were sitting out in 117-degree heat trying to sell fireworks, and then they were banned. And, you know, obviously, you know, the expense for my company was great, but also the fundraisers for the nonprofit organizations suffered immensely. So I'm just asking the city of Salem to allow TNT fireworks and our nonprofit organizations to be part of the solution. We want to work with you guys, and we understand what you guys are dealing with, and we've been there before, so we can make recommendations to the fire chief, or the fire marshal, or the city council, or staff, you know, on what other municipalities are doing to help, you know, curb some of these issues and allow you guys to, the ability to ban the sale or the use when it's extreme. The other thing that I would ask is that the city allow us to also give some sort of presentation on enforcement, and the difference between the fireworks that we sell in Oregon and the fireworks that are in Washington that typically cause these fires. The fireworks in Oregon don't go off the ground, they stay on the ground. The aerials that are coming in from Washington are a huge problem in Oregon, and some of it is conditioned with kids going with their parents to buy fireworks in Washington and bring them back to Oregon. And frankly, it's more of a deterrent for us than anything else. When people are bringing aerials back from Washington into Oregon, those are the things that are really causing the fires. And so we also have some ideas on enforcement issues for the city council and for the police, because ultimately, that's really where the problem is. It's difficult to enforce an aerial ban, which those fireworks are already illegal, but everybody sees them every single night during the Fourth of July. So I just ask the council to help, allow us to be, help, allow us to be a solution rather than, you know, a problem. And I thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Any questions for Mr. Trout? Councillor Nordike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Trout, thank you so much for coming forward. I appreciate hearing from you. And although I don't have a specific question right now, I would strongly encourage you to get ahold of me, because I would like to hear more from your perspective. So my city email's on like everybody else's, but it's vnordike@cityofsalem.net. I would love to hear more about your perspective another time when you have more than three minutes to speak. Thank you.
I'm sure you guys will be reaching out to all of you, so you'll be hearing from us, and I'll certainly give everyone my contact information, and I'm happy to meet with any of the councillors.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Trout. Who've I got next? Hannah Morrell?
Good evening, folks. My name is Hannah Morrell. I am with Pacific Still Financial Coaching. I'm a holistic financial coach. I am at Ward 4, which means that councillor Leong is my councillor. And thank you councillor Leong for that land acknowledgement. I think that's an important part of our shared experience in our occupied, the land that we occupy. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you councillor, and especially thank you councillor Phillips for leading the initiative of the resolution to support healthcare for all Oregon. I do want to echo Ms. Lyons Nelson's comments as well. Thank you. You are speaking from my heart. My work as a holistic financial coach brings me in contact with people all over the income spectrum. I have clients who earn in the high six figures every year, and clients who have never earned more than about $20,000 per year, and have spent the majority of their lives receiving community assistance. I have one particular client in mind tonight. She is a Katrina survivor whom we've moved here to our beautiful wholesome state to heal and to grow. And what she found instead was that she was repeatedly and blatantly disregarded. Her wishes, her autonomy, and her body were all subjected to significant trauma. Because she's a black woman, her voice has not been heard. She's been seen to be drug-seeking or stronger than she is because of the color of her skin. That mental and physical traumatization is part of our healthcare system, not seeing her with the same value that they would see someone like me. So I'm here tonight to speak on her behalf. Even before this pandemic and the recession, there was ample data that healthcare in this country is an overly complicated and unnecessarily expensive system that propagates the racist, biased, and inequitable agendas that I would like to think are a mindset of the past, but have not been proven. They are still with us. The pandemic and the accompanying stress on our economy and our healthcare system has been, has brought these pain points into even deeper focus. Our healthcare system is not broken. It is doing exactly what it was designed to do. It cares for those who can pay and widens the gap between us all and supports the net worth only of insurance companies. As a state and as a nation, we have everything that we need to move to a universal healthcare system and be in line with what the rest of the civilized world is doing. We have the ability to treat everyone in this state with unconditional respect and compassion, and we need local leaders like you who are brave enough to speak and throw you the weight of your opinions in assistance of a universal healthcare system for our state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Hannah? Okay, thank you. And Detweiler?
Hello. Apologies, I'm in the middle of a sales trip, so sitting in my car. Thank you, though, for allowing me to speak today. My story is not different than many of my friends and family, but it's the one I know the best. So I'm presently, after providing employment for other people for 20 years, I am now grossly underinsured, working as a self-employed independent, excuse me, sales rep, a part-time nursery production worker, and as a part-time respite caregiver. I've been rejected by OHP because my income fluctuates month to month, and I must report income monthly to be judged covered or not covered month to month, meaning if I make a doctor's appointment, it's a complete crapshoot whether it will be covered or not. Paying premiums, I'm paying premiums, but then unable to afford the deductibles under the ACA marketplace. I'm experiencing undiagnosed autoimmune symptoms since 2014, which limit my employability in the horticultural jobs for which I'm most qualified. My children gifted me with a fitness club membership, where my big goal on the record is to someday not walk like I'm intoxicated due to problems with proprioception. And this is just one of 20 or so symptoms. I am unable to qualify for disability due to a lack of diagnosis because I can't afford to be diagnosed. I don't actually want disability, just access to diagnosis and any ideas for possible treatment. As time has gone on, I've been forced to pay out of pocket for a multitude of substandard and even dangerous treatments. I've been forced to pay for appointments that resulted in zero diagnosis or treatment. They would look at me and say, yeah, that's weird, $600, please, come back in six months, and we'll look at you again. I've been forced to pay for bait and switch healthcare billing, where the charges increased after repeated assurance by the provider of a lower quote. I've been forced to pay for pig-in-a-poke services, for which no one can tell me the cost ahead of treatment, even for something as straightforward as a toe x-ray. I am alarmed by the lack of professional accountability for and independent tracking of patient outcomes, and I'm also alarmed by the presence of extortion with regard to requiring payment for office visits in order to obtain prescription refills. So I'm, it's not rocket science.
Thank you very much. Anne, are you from here in Salem? Do you know which word?
I'm off, I'm in northeast Salem. I'm sorry to say I don't know what that is.
Okay. Well, northeast is one or, what's yours, Jose? Four? One or four, I'll bet. Or it could be with Hoy. Gosh, you got, you got three people who are listening carefully today. Thank you. Yes, councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Detweiler. I would just like to thank you for coming down. I don't have a question for you, but I just wanted to thank you for coming down and sharing your personal story. It's very powerful to hear personal firsthand experiences. You know, I'm very fortunate to have health insurance, but I've recently experienced my own struggle with our healthcare system, and I can't imagine how much more difficult it would have been without the health insurance. Just navigating it with it is extremely difficult. So I can really appreciate what you had to say, and I really appreciate you being willing to share that openly in this public forum. It's very powerful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Julia Cleary?
Good evening, councillors. My name is Julia Cleary, and I live currently in Ward 2, though I was born and raised in southeast Salem, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell you that I too support this universal healthcare, or healthcare as a human right. I want to say that people of my generation and younger, we're not afraid, we're not as afraid as maybe government workers right now, but of change. We're more, much more afraid that things are not going to change. Right now, I have to tell you, in Salem alone, I have witnessed at least twice people rejecting ambulances, people who needed healthcare very badly. But when the ambulance got there, they rejected the care because they know if they go to the hospital, they don't have any idea what the cost is going to be. They don't know if their insurance covers it, what little insurance they have. They're much more afraid of the system. What we have just does not serve the needs of the people. There's too many hands in it, too. Basically, this system, as we have it, is not serving the United States citizens, it's not serving the people of Salem. And we need to affirm that they're right to be healed, to be taken care of by their doctors, and not worry about all these middlemen that come in and want to negotiate prices. You can't negotiate prices on a gurney on the operating table. So I highly urge your support for healthcare as a human right. And while I admit that, yes, it might cause some, you know, there will need to be changes made, and those changes can be scary, but it's much scarier if we don't change. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any question, any questions for Ms. Cleary? Okay, thank you. Valdez Bravo?
Hello, my name is Valdez Bravo. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I grew up in just south of Ward 4, no longer live in Salem, but my mom still does. So I went to Sumter, Judson, and Spring. So thank you for hearing my comments tonight. I'm here tonight as vice president of Healthcare For All Oregon and providing testimony and support of the resolution to affirm healthcare as a human right and adopt the constitutional amendment. I hope city council will vote for this resolution. I, as an Oregon native of Latinx and Standing Rock descent, Standing Rock's two descent, I was born at Oregon Health and Sciences University, OHSU, in 1977. Although my family lived in Salem, my mom lacked healthcare, and OHSU allowed her to access maternity services, knowing she lacked the ability to pay. Two years later, with the establishment of the Chmala Indian Health Service Center in my hometown, my family was able to access primary care and dental services at Chmala, despite our inability to pay for health insurance. And as a child, I was able to get the care I needed at times, early in my life, when I was faced with health challenges that my folks might not otherwise have been able to afford to treat. At the age of 18, three weeks out of high school, I joined the U.S. Army in the hopes of adventure, learning a vocation, earning money for college, seeing the world, and serving the country that I love. I was fortunate enough to enlist as a medical equipment repairman, working in army hospitals all over the world for eight years, including with the 48th Combat Support Hospital in Afghanistan as part of Operation During Freedom. And during these eight years, as an active-duty soldier, I received high-quality care from military physicians, nurses, and other care providers. Now, following my honorable discharge from Army in 2003, I went back to work at OHSU. My wife had come full circle. I felt a bit like a salmon returning to the place where I was born. Six months later, I joined the Department of Veterans Affairs, and it's been an honor to serve my fellow veterans. Will probably continue my federal service, working in positions of increasing responsibility now as a chief operating officer at the VA in Southern Oregon. And as I like to say, I'm not only an executive, but I'm also a client. I probably get my care, the best care anywhere from the VA. Oftentimes, the only reason I had healthcare was because the government recognized healthcare as my right, whether it was because of my status and eligibility as a Native American, as an active-duty soldier, or now as a veteran, the government has always ensured that I had the care I need to thrive. And I want to ensure that all of us have the healthcare we need to thrive, because I believe healthcare is a human right. I believe everyone should be able to access the care they need, regardless of their age, race, employment status, military service, zip code, or ability to pay. And that's why I support this resolution, and I hope that you all will join me in supporting it. Oregon has led the way in transformative healthcare reform across the years. When I was down at Baylor in Texas, earning my dual master's degree in health administration MBA, I was so proud when our faculty would highlight Oregon as a leader in medical marijuana, the Oregon Health Plan, Death with Dignity, and other advances in terms of forward-leaning healthcare innovations. This type of solution will help ensure that everyone has the healthcare that they need, and I hope that the city council will join me in supporting it. Not only will this ensure, from a moral standpoint, ensure that everyone we know, your neighbors, your loved ones, your family, your friends, the people at work, your church, your community, have the healthcare they need and won't be medically bankrupted because of it. It will eliminate vast amounts of waste in the system through our, eliminating and potentially insurers as a payer. It'll rein in big pharmacy costs, the cost of Big Pharma. The VA has the ability to, nationwide, to negotiate its prices, and guess what? The VA pays the lowest prices for medications and pharmaceuticals of any healthcare deliverer in the country. It'll increase quality outcomes through proactive approach and providing preventative care to everyone. It won't be a luxury to get healthcare, and Oregon can and should lead the way. So thank you so much for hearing me. I hope you support the resolution to add healthcare as a human right into the Oregon Constitution and to support any legislation on the state or federal level that does, that makes it happen. Everybody in, nobody out. Valdez Bravo, Vice President, Healthcare For All Oregon. Thank you so much to councillor Phillips for introducing this resolution, and may you all have a lovely night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. Councillor Phillips?
Thank you. Just a quick comment to Mr. Bravo. Thank you, Valdez, for coming down tonight, and thank you for your continued service to our country, you know, both in the military and in the VA system. I know my brother is a major in the Army Reserves, and, you know, he really depends on his VA care. You know, I just, and I also want to express my gratitude to everybody who testified on behalf of this resolution, and just, oh, I lost my point. I'm sure I'll remember it when I get back to the actual motion, but thank you so much, Valdez, for coming down tonight.
Thank you all. Good to be in my hometown, even virtually. Love Salem. Jerry City all the way.
Anybody else got a question? Okay, then, I'm going to move on and pick up the public comment that is not on agenda item. Mr. James Cowan?
Mr. Cowan is not in the meeting.
He's not in the meeting, okay. Jonathan Elliott?
He is not in the meeting either.
Okay. I'll check back with him at the end of the meeting, just in case they're timing themselves. Okay. Why don't we move on to the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by councillor Stapleton?
So tonight, we have item 3.1A, the June 28, 2021 draft city council minutes. Item 3.2A
Item three point two A, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget and setting the parking tax for the downtown parking district. And item three point three A, purchase and sell agreement with Dragon Fist LLC for acquisition of a portion of the property located at five six six nine Commercial Street Southeast to complete a system restoration, I'm sorry, a stream restoration and storm water remediation project. And three point three B, amendment to lease with Salem Cryo LLC for expansion of lease space located at three six five Berry Street Southeast in the Liberty Parkade. Item three point three C, approval of telecommunications franchise agreement granting Hunter Communications and Technologies Communications, the non-exclusive right to construct, use, operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city's right of way. Item three point three D, Regional Traffic Control Center intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation. And that concludes the consent con.
Great. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to have a, a brief comment on the three point two A, which is the downtown parking um, uh, parking tax for the downtown district. This is something we have to do to continue the program we have now. It's not taking any stand on what might happen in the future and uh, uh, you know, there's uh, with the pandemic, with the climate action plan, there's lots of issues that are surrounding uh, the downtown parking, but in order to continue what we've got without any current, any kind of replacement strategy, we've got to pass this. So that's why I'm voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comment? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Phillips.
Hi.
Counselor Leon.
Hi.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis.
Hi.
Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Okay, motion passes. We'll move then to Special Orders of Business, uh, five A, Counselor Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. So uh, I, I am thrilled to uh introduce this, this motion. Um, I helped me with the process. Uh, this is my first time introducing a motion.
What you do is make the motion and that'll.
Okay, I, I move uh, the, the motion introduced uh i- in the documents um, to a, a resolution declaring healthcare a fundamental right and supporting state and federal legislative action to achieve universal uh high-quality healthcare.
Second.
Second, Anderson. Okay, now Counselor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bennett. I, I really, I, you can't tell, I'm really quite excited about this opportunity um, to testify or to submit this resolution um in favor of declaring uh healthcare as a fundamental right. Um, and I, I do remember what I wanted to say to Mr. Bravo who spoke earlier and to all of the people who submitted written or uh, you know, video testimony th- this evening, which is thank you, um, especially to Healthcare for All Oregon, uh, who I worked with as, as well as many other uh community groups and individuals uh throughout Salem um, to get what I think is a very strong resolution. Um, you know, I, I, as a emergency room doctor practicing healthcare in the, the busiest emergency room in the state of Oregon, I cannot tell you how many times I've seen people, uh, you know, harmed by either the rationing of care or under insurance or lack of coverage. Um, I'm not saying that our system is foundationally flawed, but I think we all have to agree that we could do better. You know, more people need better healthcare. Um, and, and while some of the testimony tonight, you know, uh, was definitely very, very passionate, I'm not asking for any, you know, uh, specific fixes tonight, um, other than what's outlined in this resolution. Um, I, I've tailored this to uh, you know, speak to local things that are happening. So in the last legislative cycle, there was the passage of Senate Joint Resolution twelve, which refers the question um, as a ballot initiative to the state of Oregon, which is that uh, we'll be voting on whether or not we agree that healthcare is a fundamental right. And I'm, I'm asking, we're asking the, the City Council weigh in on this and that we take the position that people should vote yes. Um, you know, it's changed over the years since it was introduced by Representative Greenlick, I believe. Um, in the past, uh, we're saying a fundamental right as opposed to just saying it's a human right. Um, and we're, we're making sure that we don't take away from our other constitutional obligations like education. Uh, beyond that, we're, we're stating our support for uh the state of Oregon to continue their work uh through past legislation on achieving true, you know, universal coverage. Um, the reason why I think this is so timely is Oregon was above the average. We got to ninety-four percent coverage in the state, but as a result of the pandemic and other, um, you know, things that are happening as social determinants of care, we, we've slipped a bit and we've gone down to, you know, ninety-two or less percent. So there, there's continued work that needs to be done. And then finally, you know, we're asking our federal delegation to keep working um on achieving things like waivers that would allow states like Oregon who are doing things that are, you know, more local and, and cutting edge to get to that true one hundred percent coverage so that they can continue uh without running afoul of, you know, the, the CMS and criteria that exist at the federal level. So this is, this is tailored to be local. It's not a specific prescription for how to get there. Um, you know, this is not an endorsement of Medicare for All. I mean, I might be supportive of single payer individually, but that's not what I'm asking City Council to weigh in on. I'm just saying that we agree with the words, healthcare is a fundamental right and that we keep working to be better as a state um in terms of providing healthcare for everybody.
Great. Thank you. Counselor, I had a uh, very good, I had a question about this. Does this take into account alternative uh medical models, chiropractic, naturopathy, uh, other kinds of care systems that may not be part of the Western medical model? Does this pick up those as part of the fundamental human right?
Uh, so it's, it's an excellent question and, and because of the broad language, it doesn't specifically include or exclude that, but I think you bring up an excellent point and, and most systems that are being considered absolutely in, include those. I mean.
Okay.
Yeah. Be- beyond, uh, I mean, at healthcare in this country gets to be so arbitrary. I mean, uh, the eyes, the hearing, dental care, these are all part of the human body and yet they're not necessarily, you know, standard included in, in healthcare. So I think, you know, whether it's your point as to other, you know, I'm, I'm a fan of allopathic medicine, but to other non-allopathic medicine options, um, I, I think that, you know, more people need better healthcare. So it's an excellent point.
The other, and you, you hit right on it, is the other kinds of medical care. I know from my professional experience, one of the really common uh problems faced by children in school is dental. It isn't the uh, the broader health issue. It's the dental health can become really a barrier for kids uh at school. Does this pick up dental health? As well as, as ophthalmological or optometric, all the rest of the.
So it's a, it's a great question and, and it's my understanding that Healthcare for All Oregon agrees with you a- and with me is that their efforts would include those things. Um, again, we're not talking about Medicare for All tonight. Uh, you know, that, there's no chance to get there this year at the federal level. I'm just talking about local action, but when we talk about, you know, Medicare for All, uh, you know, as activists, uh, it, it means new and improved, which includes dental, vision, hearing, those things. But, but again, really, I'm just asking us to take the stance that we support um, voting for that, that state constitution amendment, which is stating that healthcare is a fundamental right. It doesn't have the specific, you know, how do we go to get there, but everybody working on it shares the opinion that yes, it would include those things.
That's great. I hadn't had a chance to read any of the uh bills involved and I just wondered, I, I have watched over the years as uh the allopathic model has excluded so many other ki- forms of healthcare and I, I just wanted to find out kind of what you're thinking. It's, it sounds really reasonable. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just had a couple of quick comments. Uh, one of the, one of the comments I just wanted to, I just wanted to address, sometimes we're asked, you know, why is the city weighing in on something like this? Why is City Council taking your position? And I think that, I just want to say that in my opinion is it's important that we offer our opinion on certain things when it's um of such universal import of something like healthcare. And uh certainly this impacts every resident, every person who works in Salem. And it also uh impacts the city fiscally. Uh, we pay a lot of money every year uh for health insurance for our, the employees of the city. And um the, the fact that not everybody enjoys that kind of healthcare coverage is really, in my mind, in, in this, in this country, it's, it's criminal. I mean, for people, you know, I shared with you all that uh during the last year I experienced Bell's palsy. Uh, and I'm still experiencing some, a little bit of the effects of it. But in the course of that, you know, I've had the opportunity to talk with a lot of people about their treatment options and things and you asked about some alternative medicines and you know, I go, I personally uh receive acupuncture every other week and that's been a huge part of my recovery. But there are so many people I talk to who can't go to that because they can't afford it, because it's not covered under their insurance. And the fact that I can get a trea- a, a treatment for my health that somebody else can't is just not right and I'm really proud to support this. I hope everybody will, because I think it's the right thing to do and it's, it's critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonzalez.
No, I intend to vote in favor of this. You know, I uh actually first became involved in healthcare discussions during uh President Obama's first term. You know, I advocated for a better healthcare system uh locally, statewide and went to DC twice, actually. You know, it was a small business voice. It was an important one and uh it was so important at that time that my friend, he actually got invited to the, the White House, White House lawn, to the um State of the Union address. Uh, actually, I think he sat by Michelle at that time. And um I think I was second choice, but you know, Jim Howser, that's that, Jim got lucky, you know, um. But in addition to here in the state, I was appointed by then Governor Kitzaberg to cover Oregon for those that don't, that remember that fiasco. You know, I was able to see in detail, you know, uh, the issues, uh, the problems with this uh, the system coming from the outside, you know, so here's a couple of things that just sort of keep me up at night. I just sort of want to throw out now. Uh, first is I think we need to disconnect our healthcare from our employment. So can you imagine if we connected our car insurance payments to our employment? You know, so I think that's one of the first things that we have to somehow get through. And then second of all is I'm thinking about the cost and just, as you know, as a small business guy, every, every line item counts. And when I looked at, when I look at this, I'm thinking, well, which of these costs can we rein, rein in? Um, med- medicine, medications, I'm hoping. Um, salaries, you know, who's going to take less? Um, are we going to be okay with a decent looking hospital and not just a fancy one? Are we okay with just something simple? Or when a doctor can't really tell us what's wrong with this, but we demand that they run every expensive test? I mean, no matter the cost, you know, uh, those are the few things that I just keep, uh, keeps me up at night, but I do know that if we had good healthcare from birth, we would have what we want, you know, so. Thank you, Counselor Phillips, for bringing this to us and uh, but we have a lot of work to do.
Uh, Counselor Nordike.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Phillips, for bringing this motion. Healthcare is a fundamental right. I fundamentally agree with that, wholeheartedly agree with that. And even though we have absolutely zero jurisdiction over public health, it matters that we as leaders speak up and demonstrate the need for this because we have relationships with other leaders in the communities. The public health departments are run by the counties. They need to know that this is important. They need to hear it from everyone, other elected officials, all their constituents. The state of Oregon needs to hear that. We know that the state is finally prioritizing mental health as part of medical health and I'm excited to see that. Uh, there is a huge amount of unmet need and I don't think anyone can say it better than the testimonials we've already heard from people who signed up and had the courage to share their personal stories with us tonight. As someone who has volunteered in the camps at Wallace Marine and Cascade Gateway, I can tell you that lack of access to healthcare is a cause of homelessness. I have spoken to individuals who lost everything because when they, their medical bills got too high, they could not afford to keep a house, a, a roof over their head. It is one of the causes out there and unfortunately, there are so many people who are just one bad health event, one unexpected healthcare event away from losing everything. And in this country, that is appalling. It's completely unacceptable. So I'll be glad to support this motion. Thank you, Counselor Phillips.
Thank you very much. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. Yes, and very quickly, I just want to thank you, Counselor Phillips, for bringing this forward and, and I intend to enthusiastically vote yes for this and, and I echo all of the wonderful, beautiful things that have been said by fellow councilors.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Um, real quickly, I, I too want to thank you, Counselor Phillips, for bringing this forward. Um, w- when I think of fundamental rights, I, I think of the main three that this country is built on, life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. When I, when I zero in on those, life to me means health. And certainly the pursuit of happiness. If you're not healthy, you should have the right to pursue that health. So I, I feel as though that we've had these rights ever since this country started. The, the practice is something that needs to be fixed. I, I don't know if I agree, Counselor Phillips, that the system is not flawed. Um, I, I believe it is and that's why we're here and that's hopefully, hopefully what we will get out of this um in the near future here in Oregon and eventually in the whole country.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Phillips.
Enthusiastic, aye.
Counselor Leon.
Hi.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
Counselor Nordike.
Hi.
Counselor Lewis.
Hi.
Counselor Stapleton.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. I B, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to direct staff to draft an ordinance prohibiting the sale and use of fireworks in the event of hazardous conditions during the Fourth of July holiday weekend. Hazardous conditions shall be defined in the ordinance upon staff recommendation and review by council.
Seconds. Uh, second by Phillips.
Thank you. So folks, we have had a really uh, a year with intense drought, a year with triple-digit temperatures and in fact, last I saw, we are actually in a severe drought as demonstrated by national weather standards. We know that several cities restricted or outright banned fireworks over the Fourth of July weekend. And I know that for each of those organizations, I'm sure, this is not an easy decision to make. Uh, it includes, as I understand it, Portland, Multnomah County, Milwaukee, Tigard, Tewallaton, Gresham, West Lynn, Hood River, the Dows, Newburgh, Bend, and perhaps others. And I can tell you that fireworks is something that inspires a lot of interest and it is something that I feel that we need to do a deeper dive into. The reality is that this will not be the last year that we have a severe drought. It won't be the last year that we have triple-digit temperatures and it won't be the last year that people will come to us asking us to take those considerations into, to basically take those conditions into consideration and decide whether it makes sense to allow the sale or use of fireworks to continue without acknowledging those concerns. And so what I'm asking for today is for us to start a conversation. And that's why I'm glad that Mr. Trout spoke up because I want it to be a conversation, not just with council and with the energy, excuse me, the emergency preparedness staff that the city have, but with the persons who sell fireworks, for example. Because this is an issue that constituents brought to me early on in my term. And I know that it will continue to pop up year after year. Having an ordinance in place gives people consistency. It means they know what to expect so that we're not scrambling at the last minute to decide whether it's appropriate to have a ban this year or not. And that will give a level of consistency and clarity to everybody. Uh, the people, the vendors who want to sell fireworks, the persons who want to buy fireworks, the persons who want to shoot off fireworks. I think having that level of consistency and having that conversation is something we should do now so that by the time we make a decision on what we want that to look like, whether we want to move forward with it, we've had an opportunity for public input from people who are involved in it in all ways, shapes and forms. So for that reason, I brought the motion. But I want to make clear that it was certainly, I was not alone in this. Uh, Counselor Phillips and I discussed this ahead of time. And so, but as you know, only one counselor can bring a motion at time. And I told Counselor Phillips, let's, let's not worry so much about taking credit, let's just. Let's just worry on making good results and good policy. So I'm here to bring this motion to initiate that conversation with you all. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Nordike, I thank you for bringing your motion. I, I agree with almost everything you just said. My problem tonight, though, is that I don't necessarily agree with the motion. Everything you just said sounds, I can get on board with every bit of it. But the, the motion is to draft an ordinance for the, to prohibit the sale and use of fireworks in the, in the event of hazardous conditions during the Fourth of July holiday weekend. And I'm not sure where that gets us, because in my, I don't know how it is in South Salem necessarily, but over here in East Salem, it's pretty much like living in a war zone for a good week. And we're, we still have fireworks going today. And as I read the motion, that wouldn't impact any of that. The other, the other issue that, that we have out here is that, well, most of the fireworks that I'm aware of are already illegal, because anything that goes up in the air is already illegal. And so this motion actually wouldn't impact that. That's really more of an issue of enforcement. And then also, a lot of the fireworks I see, like, I can look out my front door, and I could throw a rock into the, into unincorporated Salem, into the county. And so that's where a lot of the fireworks were happening as well. And so coordination with the county is, is critical for us to have an actual impact. And so I'm just wondering, have you had any conversations with the commissioners? Where are we at with that, with that whole part of the process? And I, I want to be able to support this, but I want, in its current form, I'm not quite there yet.
Okay. Counselor Phillips?
My, my video dropped there, I'm back. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, Counselor Nordike, for, for bringing this forward. I, I read the, the motion, and I missed that it said Fourth of July specifically. I don't think that was the intention to limit it to just that one weekend. It's certainly not, you know, my intention in supporting this. You know, I, I've, I've told Counselor Nordike that my only internal debate is whether or not I want to move forward as a city, having it based on conditions that are sort of weather-specific, or if I just want to take a very simple stance of banning the use and sale of fireworks. I, I know that enforcement has been brought up, you know, previously and tonight. I, I'm of the opinion sometimes it's just easier and, and better if we take a simple stance of communicating what we want our residents to do. And, and it's, I think it's absolutely true. I don't think anyone here would disagree that our police and, and local, you know, fire department have no way to, to enforce the ban, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, in my opinion. I, I think that we've seen that in communities that even had a last-minute, you know, emergency ban, that they've had significantly fewer, you know, fire events reported compared to historical norms. So I, I think that sometimes, you know, we forget that soft power is power, and that's the ability to get people to do what you want just by asking. So again, I, I am very much in support of this conversation. I don't know if, you know, if it would be better to just do a friendly amendment changing the timeframe, or if it would be better to refer this to a work session. But I, I support this discussion, and I really want us to see, see us all take some action on this. And, and I think for me, the, the wake-up was just that, that heat event, you know. And now we know that, you know, June, this June was the hottest June in Oregon that, that, you know, humans have ever recorded. And that we have to get used to the fact that the rate of change is increasing. So when you get these, you know, climate crisis events, they're just going to be more frequent and more unpredictable. So I think we could take some simple stances to make a difference moving forward, and this would be that.
Thank you. I, I'd like to check in with you, Mr. Powers, and the Fire Chief. Just kind of following up on Counselor Hoy's comments, I've, you know, some of the issues he raised. The other part of this that probably concerns me is I think we already have ordinances. I believe that it's pretty much in place, including bans on, obviously, on aerial fireworks within the city limits. But I'd like to understand what authority we currently have in place before we start messing with it and maybe making it less restrictive than it currently is.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think Fire Chief Niblock and City Attorney Paterson can, can answer those questions regarding the existing regulatory or emergency power that's available. And also, Chief Niblock can speak to the coordination and consultation that he or his staff do with, you know, surrounding, surrounding agencies in, in the, in the state.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. A couple of clarification things to start with, just for sake of information. Legally, we can, we can have the sale of fireworks now from June 23rd to July 6th. That's the period that we sell fireworks in Oregon. That's permitted through the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office. Our deputy fire marshal is go out and inspect the tents to make sure they're safe to operate within the city. So that's the time period that we can sell fireworks. Fireworks can be discharged year-round. You often hear them on the Fourth of July, obviously, but you hear them on New Year's, Super Bowl. You know, you pick, you pick a celebration event, Cinco de Mayo, you'll hear them that time of year, too. So they're legal to use year-round. They're only legal to sell during a certain period of time in the city limits. Now, when we talk about the legal fireworks, like Counselor Hoy mentioned, those are the ones that stay on the ground, the sparklers, the things like that. Anything that flies in the air has been illegal in Oregon for years. You only have to drive across the border into Washington or Indian, any Indian reservation to be able to purchase these fireworks, and many people do purchase them. And that's what, you know, the main issue we have is the illegal fireworks that are already illegal that are being lit off in our community. The, the other thing that I want to clarify is we already have procedures in place under an emergency order. If we see conditions that would dictate me requesting the city manager to declare an emergency, we can do a, a lot of things under that, including the, you know, the ignition of fireworks under a total burn ban. I have to tell you that I follow it very closely this year, like I do every year, looking at our local weather forecasts. And our conditions here in Salem, while we do have some drought conditions, were minimal for large fire risk. And this is from the National Pacific Northwest Significant Fire Potential Forecast. So we look at the science every year. I can show you a 10-year history of firework-related fires in our town, and I think the largest year's loss we had was $7,000. This year, we had five fires related to fireworks, about $3,000 in property loss. So the, the issue of, you know, fireworks are causing a lot of fires, simply it's not the case in Salem. Certainly, we've had some large fires started with fireworks across the state, but that's not the case in Salem. So we really evaluate every year, and we do this all the time. We do it during the ice storms, we do it during, you know, water events, anything that relates to emergency management. So we do have things in place to be able to place a ban in place if need be. What we don't do is look at, you know, global warming as a, as a reason to, to do a firework ban. We look at actual weather conditions in the city and our, and our forecast on seven-day impacts that we're going to have. Now, you're not going to hurt my feelings. If council, if council decides as a policy they want to ban fireworks in the city, and that's all fireworks, less people playing with fire is going to be less liability and less chance. So you're never, you're not going to find too many fire chiefs that are going to say, hey, that, you know, let's, let's legalize more fireworks. Our lived experience doesn't tell us that that's that big of an issue. Our, our issue really is the noise complaints with the fireworks going off. And I think that's the, the majority of the complaints that we get and the responses that we go to. We upstaff every year, but quite frankly, we do not have the resources to, to really do an enforcement of, of, you've all seen the neighborhoods at night, there's fireworks going off everywhere. So, but if council elects as a policy to say we're not going to have fireworks anymore in the city, then we would mount a campaign for education and enforcement, and we'd have to reallocate some resources to be able to make that a priority. You know, the, the police had some extra staffing on this year, as did we, and there were so many calls for more emergent situations, both in police and fire department, that we did not respond to a lot of the fireworks, fireworks-related calls. They were basically noise complaints, and that's pretty low in the priority when you're looking at crimes and fires and heart attacks and those kind of things. So that's just some background for you. But really, this is a, this is not a fire danger issue. This is more of a policy issue that council could consider moving forward with if they desired to.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chief, for all of that really helpful information. I, I struggled with this one because I, well, I, maybe I'll give a little backstory here. I was in a meeting with some of the other counselors in a subcommittee meeting. We were talking about carrots and sticks as it, as it pertains to developers and developing affordable housing. And they were asking for more carrots, and I was commenting that, you know, a, a lot of us, just average Joes, we don't get a lot of carrots, and we get a heck of a lot of sticks. It seems like everything, you know, is, is kind of geared towards if you do something out, out of line or step out of line, then, then there's a stick and, and not a lot of incentive to do something to help kind of move our society in a general direction. And so in, with this topic, this is where I would like to see some carrots and not so many sticks. You know, fireworks have been a part of our history in our country since the beginning. This is how we have celebrated our independence for a long time. Am I a huge, well, how do I say this? I, noise pollution is huge for me. I would, this is something in my, my four years that I hope to tackle and to actually, you know, really investigate and figure out how we can make some change here. And yes, fireworks play into that. But at the same time, so does enforcement. And how are we going to enforce a new law or new ordinance without the funds? I think a lot of people, maybe some of the people who have reached out to me about being against fireworks and wanting a ban on them are also the ones who have reached out to me saying they don't support us hiring any more police officers. So I struggle with that, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, you know, laugh at anybody or, or deem this as, as a silly thing. I understand the tension between those two things. It's hard, and that's what makes being a counselor and these, these decisions hard and challenging, is because you have these two semi, or seemingly opposing things, and they're both true and they're both real, and it's our jobs to sort it out. So I, in, in my opinion, as somebody who is all there for the conversation about noise pollution, but who also loves fireworks, they've been a part of my life, you know, celebrations for a long time. So I would rather see things like, how can we invest in ways as a community to celebrate the Fourth of July together instead of individually in these unsafe conditions? Could we possibly start doing, you know, large events for the whole community? And maybe people who buy individually are, yeah, you know, there's a fee that goes towards, you know, putting that on financially to support the community celebration. So I would rather be, I'm more interested in talking about things in that way instead of more ordinances or bans. I also do want to acknowledge that I think all of us are suffering from some PTSD from last year with the forest fires. And that's not a joke either. I struggled with PTSD for a, a number of reasons in my life, and so I, I understand the telltale signs of it for myself. And I know that as a community, it was hard last year to see those fires going and to watch the map and to see the wind and, and see the sky change and know that as soon as it hits those grassy fields east of us, what's going to stop it from our town? And so there was a lot of fear and anxiety, and I think that these droughts and these high temperatures have triggered some of those fear responses. And so I want to, I want to acknowledge that that's real and a hardship for a lot of people. But I also don't want that to be the knee-jerk reaction to going down, down a road that I'm not quite ready to go down yet. And, and I also want to say that I trust the chief and the city manager, that they were really here for making sure that we were making the right decision here. I don't think that it was flippant decision. I think it was well thought out. And yeah, I, I think that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonzalez, did you have your hand up at one point? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to say that I don't know that I might vote at the end of this for an ordinance prohibiting the sale and use of fireworks as proposed, but I do think we need more discussion. The, the information that Chief Niblock gave to us was very, very helpful. And I also don't want to, like Counselor Stevenson, I don't want to end up with a knee-jerk reaction. And I will tell you, I had a knee-jerk reaction in a discussion with the city manager after one of these events where I said, let's ban them and, and, you know. And I think that Mr. Powers and the chief have done a good job in responding to things, but I'd still like to get more information. So, City Manager Powers, I'm sorry, I, I had a knee-jerk reaction to you in one of our discussions, but I don't want to knee-jerk again. I want to get more information. So I'm going to support this motion, but I may not vote for, you know, for it when it comes. That'll just give us a more chance to hear, hear things from other people.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to be able to support the motion for a few reasons, but I want to state first that fireworks always have been and always will be dangerous. And the requirement of those who use them is to be careful. The reason that I, that I can't support the motion is I, I truly believe that the city already has a, a system that can ban fireworks if the situation dictates it. We heard that from the fire chief, we heard that from the city manager. So I don't, I don't think we need to create more authority. I think it's already there. As far as fireworks, I want to follow up on something Counselor Stapleton said. You know, I, I wondered today after I got home, when do we start using fireworks to celebrate the Fourth of July? And the answer is right there in Google. On July 8th, 1776, was the first celebration of the independence of this country, and fireworks were used. You can say what you want about tradition, but it is something that has been involved with people's lives for centuries. I know as a young boy, I was, was very happy to watch the fireworks. I know as an adult, I did some, some stupid things, and the fireworks got me. But I think there is something to say about tradition. The last thing I'm going to say, and I'm, I'm going to put it this way. I, I think what we're hearing and what we heard from a lot of the citizens is fear. Fear about what other people will do. You know, I, I know it's not the exact comparison, but we, we had a solar eclipse in the city of Salem a few years ago, and there were people that were adamant about not letting people camp in our parks because of the destruction that would follow. And as we found then, and I think as we found this past weekend, those fears were not, not right. People did, did act credibly. And, and I think that rather than take away that freedom that most people abide by, I just, I'm not in favor of the stick, as you put it, taking away more freedom. That's my input.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And listening to my colleagues, I know somebody else, I can't remember who, already suggested this, but I'm wondering if it, it seems like we are not settled or not settling into a position here. And I'm wondering if a work session on this matter might be more productive to get us to a place where we can come to some sort of consensus amongst a majority of us, just tossing that out there.
I think that's an interesting idea, Counselor. I certainly would second a motion, but I, I think even before a work session, after what I heard people saying, Counselor Anderson caught my attention with his having a chance to hear the fire chief that really having a thoughtful staff report that says, here's, here's what we've got. Here's our existing ordinance. Here's the ability of the fire chief, the authority he has and the authority the city manager has to control this issue under emerging, emergency conditions. That might be helpful. And then talk about this after everybody's had a chance to get on the same plane and, and have a chance to look at the kind of fact base that we would be dealing with as to what an ordinance might look like if we're going to add to the fire chief's authority. And, and also an opportunity, I think, for And, and also an opportunity, I think, for Counselor Nordike to follow up with the fireworks people and see if they have some interesting ideas to bring to the table. But, but I think you're right. I mean, I think it's, this, this just isn't quite ripe yet to, to really be passing an ordinance that, that, as you identified, has an internal flaw at this point anyway. Let's, let's take a look at the existing statutes and see what we can go do from there. I, I just think that makes sense. Counselor Phillips?
Yeah, I mean, I think taking this to work session makes sense, and I'm, I'm guessing Counselor Nordike wants to do that. I just want to make sure that, I mean, there certainly is an opinion out there that, that some people are reacting from a position of fear or potentially even PTSD. And I think this is a more serious, you know, conversation than, than that. I, I appreciate everyone's point of view. I'm, I'm not pushing back against, you know, word choices specifically, but, you know, there are 150 scientists spread throughout our country, 15 of which practice in major institutions in Oregon, Oregon State, University of Oregon, Portland State, urging communities like ours on the West Coast to forego fireworks. So, I mean, there really is a, a scientific discussion to be had here. And, and I, I would be, you know, I, I likely will remain on the side of supporting more than what we're currently doing, but I want to make sure there's a way to incorporate, you know, that data in, in a future work session. So I guess all of this is to ask the question, you know, is there a way to submit that letter from 150 scientists to the, the, the future work session? I would certainly like the opportunity to do that.
Just so they're not the same 150 that say, don't take the shot, you know, it's
They're, they're
Another group of scientists.
It's another group of scientists, fire scientists specifically.
Ah, okay. Counselor Hoy, do you want to make a motion?
Well, I just wanted to refer back to Counselor Phillips that, that was submitted and rewritten testimony to us by a member of the public. So that is in, in the record.
I, I wanted to make sure I didn't see it when I looked earlier today, but there was a lot to look through.
It's in there. Looks like Counselor Nordike has a, her hand up for
Okay, I'm sorry. Counselor Nordike?
All right, thank you. So as I said from the get-go, this is about initiating a conversation, and I'm very much supportive of that. So rather than address every point by point at this time, I think a work session makes sense. And I think you will find that there is a great deal of interest in this, and you'll be able to hear why. So I think that that would be an excellent approach for us to move the ball and continue the conversation to a work session.
I'll make a motion then that the council, that the city manager schedule a future work session. We, luckily, we've got a little bit of time here, at least in advance of the New Year for information on this issue and that it, or a work session on this issue. I, I would ask only, and I would include that you provide us with at least the existing ordinance and then any information the Fire Chief has on the parameters of his authority to kind of help us understand the environment we're working.
Second.
Second by Phillips. Well, this is what sounded to me like sense of the council. So if that, if no one objects, you want to, you mind if I take you to a vote? Yeah.
Powers, do you object? Thank you. Just, I, I hope council and we can certainly Mike and I, whomever can check in with you individually, but I, I would certainly welcome your, your indulgence for us to provide perhaps more than the specific information that's in the motion. Because I, my, my sense of counsel is the same as yours, Mr. Mayor. And I, I want to make sure that, that we're providing all of the information that, that the Fire Chief believes would be helpful for your deliberation, for your discussion, for the public information. And, and again, we make sure to kind of check in with you all so we're not off track on, on what you're looking for. But I, I wouldn't want to be too limited in, in what we come back to you in an information report.
Yeah, I hope that, I, I wouldn't expect that motion to limit you in terms of the amount you, you decide you want to bring. I just don't want to mandate that you spend hours and hours and hours putting together a massive staff report on this that goes, you know, I, tell us what we need to know. And then it'll help us, it'll help us get there, okay?
Thank you.
All right, if the recorder would call the roll.
Counselor Leung?
Hi.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Counselor Hoy?
Hi.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Hi.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike?
Hi.
Counselor Lewis?
Hi.
Counselor Stapleton?
Hi.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Counselor Phillips?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi. Okay, motion passes. Give me just a second here to find the rest of this. We're on
Dispose of the original motion somehow?
Mr. Mayor, we can consider that as substitute motion.
Okay, thanks. Are you okay with that? Okay. Thank you. Information reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Stapleton? What's up?
Thank you so much. I am really, really excited about item 6. B. I don't know of anybody else, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank staff. You guys have worked with me, held my hands through my first motion, helped me kind of work out all the kinks and, and of course, all of that work even behind the scenes to me, where you went out and collected all the data and, and got what seems to be really two great options to look at. And I intend to bring forward a motion at the next meeting to where we can vote on one of these options. I really do like option one, but I, I do want to take some time to talk with staff and kind of think about what's going to work best and easiest. But I would love to see that in operation for the remaining part of the year, maybe August and September, to really give a feel for how that would work in our city. So thanks to staff, and please look forward to a motion for me next meeting and, and reach out to me if you do want to chat about it ahead of time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to the motion too. I may have a different view about which option I would like to look at, but I think we ought to discuss it. And I've got a couple of questions for staff on their report. They talk about businesses that might be interfered with if, if it happens on a Saturday. I'm just curious, if, if they haven't done so, I'd like to know if staff has spoken with the businesses to find out if they're even open on Saturday. I don't need that answer now, but I'll need the answer next week. Then I'm also curious, they talk about interference with the chariots scheduled at one day. I'd like some sort of response from chariots because chariot Saturday schedule is a little different than the week schedule where they're getting people to and from employment for the, the most type. I'm also curious in that under either option one or option two, the north-south intersections go right through the east-west street, and I'd like some response to how that is really helpful to, helpful or, or dangerous to people who are going east-west. Finally, I'd like some comment from the staff about how this proposal from Counselor Stevenson, whatever form, builds on the work we've already done. Saturday Market, Winter Maple Greenway, the, the Union Street Bridge, all this sort of stuff, to me, all relates to a part and parcel of a larger thing about how are we going to talk about people not recreating on some way other than driving their car down? And I know I sound like a broken wrecker when I say that, but the other questions I ask, I'd really like staff to be able to respond to that next week. Thank you.
Be a couple of weeks, yeah. Jim Lewis?
Yeah, I have a, a simpler question, I think, for staff, and maybe could even get it answered tonight, but I'm curious, let's take option one. If the council passed that option, how long would it take the city to implement it? How many Saturdays would we have to wait?
Counselor Peter Fernandez, called the Works Director, we could probably implement it that Saturday.
Okay.
So
Yeah, certainly, option one is, is very simple to, to implement.
So the council's August 1st is, is very doable on, at least on option one, but probably option two too.
I, I'd have to make sure that we have the, the staff to, to, to implement it. Option is simple enough that, that, you know, the, the duty staff could probably handle it.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Any other information items others would like to speak to? Okay. We'll go then to second readings.
Ordinance Bill Number 721, an ordinance relating to repealing ordinance number 710 concerning vacation of a portion of the Strong Road Southeast right-of-way and declaring an emergency. Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Counselor Hoy?
Hi.
Counselor Nordike?
Hi.
Counselor Lewis?
Hi.
Counselor Stapleton?
Hi.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Counselor Phillips?
Hi.
Counselor Leung?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Hi. Okay, the motion passes. I have a couple of folks signed up for public comment on other than agenda items. Let's try them again. James Cowan?
He's still not in the meeting.
Okay, or Jonathan Elliott?
No, did not rejoin the meeting there.
Okay. Interestingly, these were both from out of town, calling about or contacting us about Airbnbs. Was there something going on here that, that I missed? Okay. Good. Well, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.